I would like to welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the October 25th, 2022 regular meeting to order with all board members present. It's crowded up here today. It's good. We will begin today's meeting with a moment of silence in remembrance of former Miramasa High School student Brian Mendoza, who recently passed away. We express our most sincere condolences to his family. Our vice president will make some remarks.
Thank you, Dr. White, Herspene, and thank you, everyone, for being here with us this evening. Before we get started, we did want to share a few minutes just to talk about Brian. So Brian was a student at Miramasa High School. He had just graduated in June of this year. He was currently, right now, a freshman at CSU San Marcos. He was selected this year for this, to be the speaker-at-large for the senior class at graduation and delivered a very engaging speech. I was there. It was fantastic. He was very honored to be selected. Brian was selected because he just, he knew, he had a big heart. He loved his community. He loved his family and friends. He was very caring, ambitious, and also very resilient. He'd spent the last few years really working hard towards his goals in high school and was pursuing his passions, particularly in the area of cutting hair. He even joked during his speech that he wanted to cut Jeff Saban's, the principal's, hair. So he'd given many haircuts to friends, family, members, even neighbors. And he also would cut hair, he would also provide haircuts to homeless people, people that didn't have money, and also at community events. Brian was shot and killed. He died at 18 years old. He left so much potential and life and loved ones behind. He was a special young man who made the decision to better his life, and he was doing just that. He was going, getting his car to go to school that morning when his life was cut short. So please give us just a moment of silence for Brian.
Thank you for that. Thank you all for listening to his family. Our condolences. The Army JROTC color guard from Moore's High School is here with us now, and we ask them to come forward to present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda, please.
Move.
Thank you, Dr. Mike. Second? Second? Thank you, Trustee Baza. I would like to have the students to vote first.
Aye.
Thank you. Guitariano?
Aye.
Thank you, and please vote electronically for the rest of us. That passes unanimously with the students concurring with us. Now we'll hear.
Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board by law 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of public speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you. Next, we will have a student presentation today from New Orleans Middle School, and we have here students who will do this, Jocelyn Frostal and Peyton Schatzko. Would you please come forward to the podium and introduce the student presentations?
Hi, my name is Peyton Schatzko.
And my name is Jocelyn Frostal. Peyton and I are both eighth graders at New Orleans Middle School in La Jolla.
We are the creators of the sixth grade wheel video.
We have personally experienced the dynamics of the wheel.
For us, half was online and half was in person. Being on Zoom through the pandemic is very different compared to what sixth graders encounter now.
Rotating through the classes allows students to enjoy different atmospheres and learn while having fun.
My favorite part of the wheel was the health rotation when we got to practice CPR and using the AED.
I enjoyed the music rotation. It was super fun, and the projects helped me learn a lot about music.
Thank you for our time to speak.
And without further ado, please enjoy the sixth grade wheel presentation.
Thank you. Congratulations. My name is Jeff Luna, principal. Our students have put together a wonderful presentation for you that will feature our sixth grade STEAM exploratory wheel. We welcome you to come out and see this program in person, but until then, until you have a chance to do that, here's a little bit about our program.
Hi, I'm Tricia Cox, and I teach Art VI in the STEAM exploratory wheel at New Orleans Middle School.
Hello, my name is Emily Newman, and I teach the music section of the wheel.
My name is Robert Wood, and I teach tech tools here at New Orleans Middle School.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Seraphin, and I want to talk to you about the health and wellness portion of the sixth grade exploratory wheel.
So Art VI in exploratory wheel is a class for kids to work with all different kinds of art and design-making materials and tools, and try different approaches for making art. So it's a mixed media course. Students also participate in art and design challenges where we emphasize skill-building, creativity and originality, growth mindset, and stuff like that. They'll get to work by themselves, in partners, in groups, to solve creative challenges, and they're going to be making art that responds to their personal interests sometimes, to maybe concerns they have about the world, and their unique perspectives they have on different things.
So the music wheel is a place where students get to explore music and how it affects their lives. Some of the topics that we cover are instruments from around the world. We look at musical vocabulary as well as musical notation. We focus on different genres of music, as well as music through the ages.
So Tech Tools is designed to introduce students to the basics of various Google apps that they may use while they're in school, as well as helping students to get organized in their Google classroom in everyday life.
And wellness and mindfulness. So I spend about three weeks on that with journaling and meditation and yoga, and trying to give kids some tools to help them with anxiety and just middle school in general. And then we jump into nutrition, which can't get enough nutrition. We talk a lot about reading labels and making good decisions. From there, we go to first aid and CPR. We have actual CPR mannequins that we use. We have AED trainers, defibrillator trainers, that the kids also, very hands-on, lots of practice with CPR and AEDs.
Visual voice, and we also kind of analyze how art and design reveals and impacts human values.
Music class is a place where students get to explore music and spend a little more time with it in an environment that they don't, that they're mostly focused on their academics. So it's a chance for them to take a break from the hard-hitting academics and have a chance to explore their creative side.
So tech can be intimidating, so we've kind of taken the approach that we like Tech Tools to be that of a casual one. Students are encouraged to help each other and share their various strengths with their classmates, things such as Sheets, Google Sheets, Google Slides, coding. Various students come with a lot of expertise, and so we encourage them to work with each other and share these strengths with their classmates.
Focus on your health, your wellness, learn, you know, explore, and so to give kids that opportunity, it just makes me happy. I love giving that opportunity.
I love teaching Art VI wheel because we just get to explore so many different art-making materials, so it's kind of fun to be able to draw and paint and collage and sculpt and assemble. So I think that's the most exciting part for me, is that we get to do all the different kinds of stuff.
All right. Music has opened a lot of doors for me personally, and I love that I get to bring some of those experiences to my students. It gives students a chance, who may not otherwise have gotten to explore music in school, a chance to explore music and to see if it is a passion for them as well.
I like being in the classroom with the students. I like the casualness of it. I enjoy being able to teach students skills that they potentially will use for their school career, if not the rest of their lives.
I think the wellness is the biggest, the meditation and the journaling, giving them those tools to sort of help them with just getting through middle school. That's really my number one.
Really. On Saturday, Roosevelt Junior High School had its, I won't say what number, reunion, but my first class. They're still meeting, so there's life beyond, and they're doing good things. Okay? Thank you all for coming. I'm talking to the students, the parents. But no, thank you. You did a great job, and thank you for coming to us. Thank you. And with that, let us move on. I would like to welcome district staff member Kate McDevitt and Madeline Moritz, National Advisor for Whole Health, Whole Child Health Alliance for a Healthier Generation, and ask them to come to the podium for the presentation.
Kate, would you like me to go first, or are you going to go first?
I'll go first, and then we can pass it over to you. Sounds good. Okay. Hello, San Diego Unified School Board and Superintendent Jackson. Thank you for having me here today to celebrate the health and well-being achievements of San Diego Unified Schools. My name is Madeline Moritz, and I'm a National Advisor of Whole Child Health with the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. It is well documented that health and learning are interconnected. Schools function best when students, staff, and teachers are happy and healthy. Over 15 years ago, Healthier Generation pioneered an award program to recognize schools that exemplify best practices in key measures related to children's health, such as serving healthier meals and snacks and offering high-quality physical and health education. Over the years, this program has been refined to reflect our understanding of the many interrelated variables that contribute to whole child health. America's healthiest schools recognition is this prestigious annual distinction presented to schools that have demonstrated remarkable efforts to prioritize essential physical, mental, and social-emotional health needs of students, staff, and families. This year, Healthier Generation is expanding the award program to meet schools and districts where they are, recognizing excellence in nine key areas: family and community engagement, nutrition and food access, health education, local wellness policy, physical education and activity, social-emotional health and learning, staff well-being, tobacco-free schools, and school health services. Today, I am excited to announce that 18 San Diego Unified Schools were awarded recognition in the last year, which means that each one of these schools is a leader in at least one of these health and well-being topic areas. This award is really a testament to San Diego Unified's commitment to creating healthy school environments. When Healthier Generation first partnered with the district back in 2014, we worked with a small cohort of schools to implement best practices with regards to nutrition and physical activity. And over the past eight years, we have seen the district double down on wellness initiatives to expand wellness programming to every school in the district and go beyond just physical health, but really support social-emotional and mental well-being as well. In just two years, we have seen the number of awarded schools increase from 10 to 18 schools. As a national organization, Healthier Generation is uplifting San Diego Unified as a leader in school wellness. This district is truly at the forefront of what is possible to create a healthy school environment where students, staff, and families can thrive. So please join me in recognizing the following schools in their achievements in whole school health and well-being. And I'm going to call up our schools. Would you like to say something first?
No way. You did an amazing job. Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, I'll call up the schools. We will hand out some certificates, and then when you're called up, please stand over there. We're going to do a photo opportunity with the board. Sound good? Okay. So first, we have Benchley Weinberger Elementary School. And Edison, you're on deck, so come on up, Edison. Perfect, and then just go over the black line. Edison? We have Field Elementary School. Horton Elementary School. La Jolla Elementary School. Miramar Ranch Elementary. Mount Everest Academy. Ocean Beach Elementary. And we also have Taft Middle School, and they were not able to be here with us today. Just kidding.
Thank you, and we'd like to take pictures with you all. You want to say something?
Dr. Casillas, do you want to receive on behalf of Taft? Excellent. Thank you, Taft.
Yes, all of the board members are going to have to, we're going to have to do a picture with everybody.
Well, I'd like to congratulate all the winners. I especially would like to give a heartfelt congratulations to all of the schools from Subdistrict B.
We congratulate all. We want every school to be the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just say that, where's our Edison principal? Edison?
Edison.
So one of our nonprofit after-school providers told me that she walked into her club meeting with snacks, you know, for the students in the club at Edison, and they were chips. And the students said, "We can't have those. We're a healthy school." And so, yeah, and so what, the result of that is, this organization, which has clubs throughout the city, got the healthy snacks list from Edison and now is changing the snacks that they're providing throughout the city. So way to go. Way to go, Edison.
As long as you leave potato chips on the list. Are there any other board members who'd like to comment or say anything? Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to further congratulate all of you. What you're doing is really setting an example for all the schools in the district, and, you know, as we know, you know, students typically don't eat the best, and parents too, and so, and staff, so we can all learn from this, and what you're doing is just setting the bar a little higher and allowing our students to think a little bit more deeply about this issue. So really, thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Trustee Baza. Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, so also, part of a healthy school is having a healthy meal, and it's knowing where those healthy meals come from, and that goes back to our, including our school gardens, where our students learn how to grow and care for and harvest and prepare fresh vegetables. That in some schools, we have a garden-to-cafe program, where they not only grow their food, but they learn how to prepare it and eat the food that's grown in their school garden. So, thank you.
And I challenge folks to try it at home, and, 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 and I'm not saying anything right now about the outcome at my house, but I still challenge you, if there's another year, you can grow something. Thank you. Yes.
I'd just kind of like to say thank you and congratulations. I know for a lot of students, especially in marginalized communities, school is one of the few places where healthy food options are the best option with costs included. So really, thank you for all the great work you do, and congratulations, and here's to many more schools.
Yes, Aleah.
And with that, I just also want to applaud a lot of the student leaders, especially the middle school students that we saw from New Orleans Middle School, and see how all of the 18 schools that have been recognized are schools that have been prioritizing not only student mental health, but staff mental health, teacher mental health, and overall creating more healthy and happy communities. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Superintendent?
I didn't, I wasn't going to, but I will. While we represent 18 here, or we recognize 18, all of our district schools are implementing district wellness. Thank you, Kate, for the work that you do, and I'll be talking about wellness for adults as well. So thank you all to the great leaders and your students, families, and parents. Thank you very much for representing all of us.
Thank you, and we really do appreciate that. I said to you yesterday, if we're going to be a healthy society, we have to be a healthy state, a healthy.
I think she was talking about what I was eating. No, I'm teasing.
Very good. Thank you all for coming out and doing this annually with us. And with that, let's move on to Item D1, the report on closed session. General Counsel Green.
Thank you. We have one item to report out from closed session. The board voted unanimously to approve joining an amicus brief in the case entitled James Lacy versus City and County of San Francisco. That is Court of Appeal Case Number A165899.
Thank you for that. Superintendent Jackson, are there any administrative assignments?
Yes, thank you, President Dr. White-Herspene. I have two this evening that I will be announcing. Very excited for the associate principal at Central Elementary School, Van... be announcing. Very excited for the Associate Principal at Central Elementary School, Vanessa Zuniga Garcia. Congratulations. Yes. I see you Liz. Your heart's in both places, right? There you go. And also, the Associate Principal for IHY Virtual Academy, Cindya Marlin. Congratulations, and I know they're going to both be great in their respective schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to our Associated Student Body reports, and we've got a couple of people here now. We have with us Kiana Rodarte from Miramesa High School, and we also have Janice Estrada, see, from Kearney High School. So, we'll start over here. Three things. One, I want you to tell us about your school. Then, I also want you to tell us about yourself and what's going on, both academically and socially.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Jackson. My name is Kiana Rodarte and I am Miramesa's High School ASB President. I'm honored to be standing here today, speaking to you all about my school's accomplishments in the year so far. Our goal as ASB leaders is to build community and uplift the spirit lost through the pandemic. So, through our events, we want students to feel proud of the school that they go to. As summer comes to, came to a close, we held our annual tailgate to hype up our student body and welcome our newest marauders. Soon after, ASB hosted our annual blood drive partnering up with San Diego Blood Drive, as it is our first blood drive we hosted this school year. In the beginning of the month of October, we hosted our Enchanted Forest themed homecoming. Our spirit days were a big hit, with anything but a backpack day having the most student participation in years. Later that week, we hosted our homecoming football game and during the halftime show, our well-known Sapphire Sound performed, in addition to floats created by class council. We were excited to bring back our homecoming dance where we were able to, where we welcomed, where students were welcomed by a beautiful light arcway before enjoying an incredible DJ, disco, movie, snacks, games, and a photo booth. We had an amazing turnout welcoming over a thousand students and their guests to the campus. We recognize, we recognize the building community within our school is as important as building community outside of it. So for this reason, Miramesa High School organized a fundraiser to benefit the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. To raise these funds, we are currently selling pink socks in our student store for students to participate in our Pink Out Football Game this Friday. In November, we will join the No Place For Hate Anti-Bias Program. We want to serve a school-wide tradition that makes students feel seen and appreciated in our community. Once again, I am grateful for the board for this opportunity to share with you all my many accomplishments with ASB and the future plans of Miramesa High School. I would also like to recognize Miramesa High School ASB Advisor Alexis Morales for setting a great example as leadership in campus. Lastly, I would like to thank our admin team, especially Mr. Savins and Ms. Reyes, that without their support and constant encouragement, none of this would have been possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I just wanted to add a little side note that when I was talking to Principal Savins, who's here in the audience, one of the kids during nothing, no, it was a, you couldn't bring, no, the backpack thing, they...
Oh, nothing but a backpack.
Nothing but a backpack, so they were bringing different things and not backpacks. And one of the kids, I think, wanted to bring her younger sister to school to take care of... And Jeff's like, "No, you can't do that."
That's good. That's a good one. Yes, we'd like to hear from you.
Good evening Superintendent Jackson, members of the board, district employees and guests. My name is Janice Estrada and I am the current Associated Student Body President at Kearney High School. Kearney High School is unique in many ways because of its small school structure. Each small school pathway focuses on different disciplines such as engineering, biomedical science, multimedia and design, and college connections. These pathways help students to succeed in the real world by giving them hands-on experience with real-world clients, challenging academic coursework and college-level technical skills. At the School of Engineering, Innovation and Design, students use design thinking to create architectural solutions that serve to benefit the community of Linda Vista. In the school I go to biomedical science and technology, students are able to intern at Rady's Children's Hospital during their senior year. At the School of Digital Media and Design, students work with the community, community clients through project-based learning using industry-standard programs and technology to create, to create digital media and 3D-printed product. At the School of College Connections, is built around a college preparatory class known as AVID. By sophomore year, all students at Kearney High School are able to take college classes at Mesa Community College. While many students struggled during the pandemic with distance learning, it actually created an opportunity for me to become a different type of student. Although I was born in the United States, I moved to Mexico as a baby, so Spanish was my first language. Learning English as a second language and attending three different elementary schools and three different middle schools, it made it, it made it hard. It made it so when I arrived at Kearney as a ninth grader, I was unmotivated and disengaged. When the pandemic hit, I was struck by how much my teachers truly cared about supporting my learning and I found a new sense of motivation. I no longer needed people to tell me what to do and when to do it, as they helped me to develop a sense of my purpose and my own abilities. When I might, while I might not be your typical ASB president, my experience in ASB for the last two years has been inspired to, by continuing to encourage engagement through our active campus culture, through our school athletics, our 30, our 30 unique campus clubs, and our social events such as our Enchanted Garden Homecoming Dance. Kearney really has something special to offer to everyone, no matter what kind of student you are. The teachers and staff at Kearney want to meet you exactly where you are and support you along, support you along your journey. I know how being engaged with your school culture can change so many aspects in your life for the better, and that's a gift that I want to pay forward to all Kearney students. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you. Is this the last multi-school we have? Because San Diego Ohio is no longer, so the Kearneys, but it seems to be working and you enjoy it, having it that way. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both for sharing today. And with that, Superintendent, you have a report?
Thank you, President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Yes, and I have some slides to show if we can... We can run that video, that would be great. So we're going to begin recently, oh, where are we going to start? Wherever you start, I'm going to start. Ah, there we go. So want to begin, we had the opportunity to welcome our first partner of California. She visited Hoover High School, and Hoover is one of our community schools, and she was really paying attention to community schools and nutrition, specifically around our Health Center, our Community Garden, as Dr. Mike mentioned earlier, as well as our Culinary Arts. And we were able to participate in a panel discussion, and one of the points of emphasis was a real appreciation for the one-time funds that have come to us, and then really talking about the partnership and how we can advocate for ongoing funding to support our students in terms of health and wellness. And Dr. Mike, I know we talked about community gardens, but beginning on our campuses with school gardens. And really happy that Trustee Barretta was able to participate, along with Assemblyperson Alvarez and City Council President, I'm sorry, Ward, sorry, yes, thank you, Ward, and City Council President Sean Elo Rivera. And we also had Jason Babino, part of this work, the former principal at Hoover High School, and what a great ambassador for the work. And so, really appreciate that, that time. And here are some photos of that visit. And also, want to thank the staff. We talked about wellness earlier, and as we talk about student wellness, it's important for us to think about the wellness for our staff as well. And so, our Fall Wellness Fair took place for our staff, and the staff who stopped by, they were able to participate in health screenings, receive flu shots and COVID vaccine. They experienced cooking demonstrations, and also financial wellness workshops and mindfulness activities. And you see here are some great, great slides. Over 650 educators, administrators, central office staff, and school support staff attended this wonderful event. More than 60 community partners, employee bargaining units, local vendors and sponsors provided many different health and wellness programs and incentives to San Diego Unified. We had over 150 businesses donate prizes. There are some bears there, huggable bears. You can hug the bears. And, and this made it very exciting. We had opportunity drawings, staff received gift cards to their favorite restaurants. We had spa packages and even resort hotel stay, and I think there was over $18,000 of donated gifts. And a huge thank you to the Wellness Council and many of our departments who participated and volunteered. Yeah, I did not win the Musical Pumpkin Walk. And they volunteered their time and created a great experience in the afternoon. And a special thanks to Jessica Marrero for her leadership. Thank you that much. So now you see some pictures, and that's not my twin. I was actually out on the basketball court. I had the opportunity to referee some of our middle school athletic games. In fact, I did three basketball games, full basketball games, yes. I'm proud of myself. I was only sore that afternoon. I recovered. Was able to, here's the coach from Crawford High School, and he was coaching Mann Middle School. I had the opportunity to referee Golden Hill, Challenger Middle School, Wanganheim Middle School, PB Middle School, and Grant K8. And I tell you, the parents were wonderful. The coaches only complained a little bit about my refereeing. We're out there to teach our children, and I want to thank our middle school athletics program. Lonnie is doing a great job. Dante's doing a great job, and collectively, Scott Juisty. And it's really building our students to participate in our high school track programs, basketball programs, soccer programs, football programs. And then I leave with deep appreciation for our school sites. And with, with my colleague, Dr. Bagula, able to visit school sites on a regular basis, and really appreciate the focus on academic success as well as welcoming school environments. As, as you spoke about, you know, we really want to create environments that are welcoming for our students, and really focus on the whole child, and really get a chance to see our leaders in action and see our teachers really caring for our students. And I just, I want to say thank you to our educators and our students. I know that your efforts throughout the pandemic has helped carry us through and really sustained the incredible focus on academics, as well as, as you mentioned, Janice, the notion about seeing the potential in every single child. And that is so important, and it was so important over these last two years. Thank you for showing up for our students and your colleagues each and every day, and to each of you, I say, Ubuntu. Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
And thank you. I always commend the staff for the event on the lawn. I think I must like food, services food. It's pretty good. I like it. I always want to go and check it out to see what they're feeding the students, and they complain, but I like it. So that shows the age difference there. So, yes, thank you for that report. And with that, each board member will now have the opportunity to speak and share if they wish, and I'm going to start with Katoriano.
Thank you. These last few weeks, definitely been very busy. I had, right after our board meeting, I had my first site visit at Lincoln High School. Beautiful campus, wonderful community. Thank you to all the staff at Lincoln High School and the staff here to help organize that. Super fun. I learned a lot. If you remember, a student named Nima came in and spoke a little bit about the district's role in providing support for students that may be struggling online, and it's been a lot of fun, and I'm definitely really looking forward to pursuing that more and really diving deep into the issue. We also had our first Student Advisory Board meeting. Definitely a lot of fun. It's so nice seeing all these student voices come together and agree and really have deep discussions that we're looking for from students and participation. On Friday, I had an opportunity to go to Crawford for San Diego Proteins, and they spoke to me. Just some of the leaders within that school focused on activism and making sure their school is the best that it can be. And I also had a great time with Richard at our San Diego High School Alumni Event where they opened a time capsule from 1976. And there are items, sorry, there are items in there from 1913, too. It was definitely really interesting. So thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go over here to Nefertiti.
Thank you. So, the first item that I have on my board information report is I was very fortunate to tour Kearney High School last Friday. It was incredible experience, especially witnessing their incredible ASB leadership led by Ms. Murray and Janice, their ASB president. And something that really stood out to me was after their event that they had at lunch, is they had a glows and grows section of their meeting where they shared both highlights and gratitude for their event, as well as room for improvement, as they would call grows, which I thought was very clever, especially since they're the Kearney comments. And then, another highlight of last week was I also met with the Crawford High School Roundtable with Trustee Katoriano. There was, it was my first time seeing the beautiful Crawford Community Center, which was just a fantastic experience, as well as hearing from PR SO Teens Leadership Academy, where they introduced themselves and had a very meaningful student-to-student conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll start with the Vice President.
I'm kind of afraid of what's, it was in that 1976 time capsule, because that wasn't that, well, like graduated about, what, eight years after that from high school? So, thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. I recently attended the Council of Great City Schools Conference, which was held last week. There was also a board, a new board member orientation program that I had gone through. It started last, this past March. It was a nine-month program with a cohort of new board members from across the US, and finished when we were in Orlando together last week. And that particular program and the actual conference were, included superintendents and board members from all across the US of the large urban school districts. And it's amazing how much, you know, we had in common and could learn from one another. We attended a talk on superintendent evaluations, learned some information from that, with our superintendent, our chief of staff, and some other district staff as well. I also was able to serve on a panel on student outcome-focused governance, as well as another panel on accelerating board capacity. So, just some really amazing conversations, and also very excited to, to say that we are going to be holding, are going to be, having that program, that conference here in San Diego next year. So, as part of that, we get to highlight some of our different student groups in terms of our musical groups, you know, performing arts, and also, you know, we'll have, you know, keynote speakers that are known nationwide. In fact, Cindy Martin, our previous superintendent, current Deputy Secretary of Education to the White House, was one of our keynotes for this event. So already looking forward to next year and trying to determine what we want to do to show off San Diego to public health educators that are going to be coming here from across the country. But it was a fantastic conference, learned a lot, and just realizing how much we have in common, how much we can learn from each other when we come together.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Barra.
Sure. I just, as Matthew mentioned, we had a great time at the San Diego High unveiling of the time capsule. I think the most mystifying thing that came out of that capsule for the students was they placed a phone book from, and you could tell the students had no idea what that was. But it was, it was great. And what was really, you know, important about that event is Lee Dolgara was able to share with the Alumni Association the plans for the next phases of construction at San Diego High. And we know San Diego High has been the last to go of our schools, because of everything that we needed to do as a school community in partnership with the city to get the lease renewed. But, so we celebrated all of that work, and, and especially, we're excited about seeing what's coming to San Diego High in future years. So, it was a great event. I also painfully, on behalf of the Enrique, and Dan Howe, and Jason Babino, and many others, the entire San Diego Unified Dodger Fan Caucus, we with humble pie congratulate the San Diego Padres on your, on your improbable victory.
Thank you. Remember, we closed a board meeting last time with Go Padres. So, yes. Thank you. Dr. McCrory.
So, continuing with the humble pie theme, actually continuing with the healthy schools and wellness theme. I will lift up our district's Food and Nutrition Services Department that provides healthy and nutritious meals for our students and staff, and call attention to the dedication and love that is put into providing school meals that include fresh, nutritious, healthy, and locally grown produce. Can we play the video that shows our energized food service employees in action?
Thank you, Dr. Mike. Trustee.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. A couple of things. First of all, Go Padres. Second, please mail in your ballots. If you're like me and all my friends, we got our ballots in the mail, we filled them out for the races that we were familiar with or could find on the internet. And then there's all these judges and things. And so, we set our ballots aside, and they stayed sitting on the, on the side table for two, three weeks. Now's the time to mail in your ballots, please. I just got a text message that my ballot has been received and counted. So, that text message is a wonderful metric for the County Board of Registars. Second, last Friday, had a great time. Went to Kearney High School for Kearney High School's homecoming. I want to thank all of the adults that make this happen for our children. I had a great time visiting with the principal, the cheer coach, a lot of the parents that are boosters, that volunteer to help support the events for our children, the coaches, the teachers, the staff. It's really, really amazing how the community comes together to support students and to allow them to have an enriched experience. And I've always been a very strong supporter of athletics at our schools, middle high schools, because it really helps students to understand that they can't play sports in high school unless they also focus and make grades. And for some students, they wouldn't have any incentive to work on their academics unless it was, if it wasn't for the sport. So, thank you. I think it's a good, a good union. The last thing I just wanted to talk about real briefly is how we need referees. Now, we saw Dr. Lamont Jackson refereeing a middle school game, and I don't know if he was trying to recruit referees, but one of the referees at the Kearney High School homecoming game was a good friend of mine. And we really need people in the community that could, please consider volunteering and becoming a referee for our children. It really can make a big difference. And I believe you do get some kind of a stipend, but it's really for the kids. The, the one thing that I did want to say, at Green Elementary School, we have a running track now. At Gage Elementary School, we have a running track now. And at other elementary schools, we're building running tracks to help increase the health and wellness of our students. So, I really want to appreciate those schools. I noticed that they were absent from tonight's honors, but I really believe that the, the schools at Green and Gage would be deserving also. Thank you.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne, just for the record, my refereeing was voluntary. I did not receive the stipend that other referees received, just for the record.
Volunteer, or did President Whitehurst Payne voluntold you to referee?
I volunteered.
Okay, good.
I wouldn't give him that assignment. I told him he had to be fair, since we had all the schools involved.
Yes, she did.
Yes, I did tell you that. Thank you all. And with my report, I just want to mention that I did talk about Roosevelt, my first assignment in San Diego. And it's a group of junior high school kids who, just a second, one second, a group of junior high school students, and it was called Junior High School, they're still together. And they're still meeting, so they always ensure that I'm there when they're having their reunions. And some other things that folks touched on that I won't belabor. This video clip that's coming up is something I wanted to show that, how we are recycling our buses, because some people would say, well, you know, we could use them, but they are beyond our use. And it costs us more money to keep them. So, I want to thank the US, let's see, this would be the Air Force, yes, who contributed to this. to see them lifted off.
Absolutely. The gifting of the three school buses from San Diego to Haiti were the first three of a total of 10. So, it's an opportunity for us to provide humanitarian service in a real meaningful, meaningful way. So, I was able to be there with our retired Marines, as well as retired Air Force. We modeled our, our shipping of the school buses after what Oakland did earlier. And we had, we were able to get them off the ground, and also get them to Haiti. And they were able to arrive in time for the students in Haiti to start their school year, riding their first school bus ever in Haiti. So, it was a collaborative effort on part of many organizations, including our school and Sister Cities International. In order to ship the buses through the Department of Defense, we had to guarantee that we had a trusted partner on the receiving end. So, these school buses would arrive and be used for the intended purpose. And it was that connection between our schools and sister cities that enabled that to happen. So, thank you, San Diego Unified. Thank you, Sister Cities. Thank you for the Air Force and Marine Retired that enabled this to be successful program. And thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. I think that we should, things that we're not going to use. I know Liberia was asking for science books, but then connecting with a group to get them out there. So, things that we're not using, others can use. And just thankful for your help. Thank you. And with that, thank you all for your reports. I would like a motion on item E1. Whoa. Okay. That was by Barrera and Wiser. And do we have any, I don't think we have any public testimony on that. Nothing's come in on that. Comments from the board members? If, yes? No? Bye? You're saying goodbye? Okay. Let's get Nepal Monsinio's vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Kitorayano?
Aye.
Thank you. And the rest of us will vote electronically. That passes unanimously with the students concurring. Thank you for that. Let us now move on to the F items, board consent agenda.
I'll move item F1 to F3.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. Yes. And let's see, no speakers on that. The board members, no questions, or any questions, no. Then, Nepal Monsinio.
Aye.
Thank you. And Kitorayano?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And board members, otherwise electronically vote. Thank you. That passes 5-0 with the students concurring. And item G1, I believe G1, Scott Sodi. He here, CAC Chair, and Sarah Ott. This is a joint report from our executive director of Special Education and the chair of the committee. Please provide your report to us. Thank you.
Is it on? Just making sure. Hi, everyone. We are, and Christina Casillas, Dr. Christina is here as well. And we're here to, do we have a clicker? Oh, thank you, to share our part. So, we will go ahead and get started. So, first, we wanted to share from the last time we were here, over the summer, different things that we did to showcase some of the work that we were able to accomplish over the summer. I know you heard already about summer experience, which includes extended school year for our students that receive special education services, as well as Level Up. So, we went to just the areas that we did besides that. So, first, we did early childhood special education assessments. Our goal here is to be able to assess all the students prior to turning three, so they get a family plan oftentimes. And we want to make sure that we are able to determine if they need special ed services when they turn three. We were able to do only about 57 last year, and although we did more this year, 159, we were not able to do as many as we wanted due to not having enough staff. So, as you can see, we have 90 San Diego Unified staff who volunteered to work over the summer, as well as some vendor staff. But we wanted to have a lot more to be able to accomplish this. So, we did better than the summer before, but still have a ways to go. Of those assessments, we did 128 full assessments, and 31 where the, was only needed for speech and language. So, what that leaves us is this year. So, we are getting a lot of requests for assessments, and we think this is due to some of the COVID pandemic. Students, when they're younger, one, two-year-olds, being isolated often can cause language delays or developmental delays. And so, we are seeing an increase in assessments. So, since kind of last year and over the summer, we have 730 assessment requests that are outstanding. We were able to complete, like I said, the ones over the summer, an addition in August and September, an additional 128. So, that still leaves us 602 that are outstanding, and we're constantly getting new requests. So, even to this date, that number probably has grown. And of those, 123 are over timeline. So, we did decrease the amount that are over timeline, but we do have some still outstanding. So, in order to improve in this area, to make sure that we're servicing our students on time, is that we have increased the number of assessment teams from six to nine. We have assessment teams that are doing assessments on the weekends, on Saturdays. And we're looking to hire three additional teachers to be able to do more assessments in our assessment teams, because right now, the teachers are part-time. So, in addition to that, we also did gate testing over the summer. We were unable to do the universal testing, the testing for third and fourth graders during the school year. And so, we had an opportunity for parents to sign up via appointment, or to have it done through the summer experience. So, if students were attending summer experience, we came to their summer experience and provided assessment. Or we offered appointments if they were not attending summer experience. So, any student that was enrolled in our district, or was going to be enrolled and enrolled through summer experience, we gave them that opportunity. So, we had about 1,426 students. Out of all our third and fourth graders, that's about 10%, that decided to take us up on that opportunity. And you can see the breakdown of third and fourth graders. And then we pulled out how many of those students have IEPs or 504s. So, that 106, which is 7% of all third and fourth graders with IEPs. And you can see the results of that. And they are a little higher, because these, again, are parents and families choosing to take us on these appointments. So, 43% were identified as gate, and were able to be starting in those gate cluster seminar classes in the fall. And of that, 37% were duly identified. Any student that we did not test over the summer will be tested this year. So, they will still have the opportunity to be tested, and we will continue gate testing this school year. The other thing we did this summer, which is brand new, is the, due to what we know as COVID, some students experience learning loss. In addition, we know we have a labor market shortage, so there may have been services that were not provided. So, when we have specialists or paraeducators that are not in schools, that may have resulted in learning loss based on missed service. And we were able to provide, not only during the school year, learning loss recovery plans, where they could get after-school or before-school tutoring. We also provided a summer institute, where students could come over the summer that was not part of summer experience, but something separate, where they could get tutoring based on their individual goals. So, overall, we had 106 students that were eligible to be part of this summer institute. Just so you understand, we had 306 that we were able to accomplish last year. So, this is, in addition to the 306, 106 got ones over the summer. And since the beginning of the school year, we have additional 74 students. So, about 500 students have participated in learning loss. And this continues all of this year and all of next year. So, we will continue to reach out. We've done trainings at over 91 schools, and we're doing about five to 10 a week. So, we expect by the end of December, all schools will be trained on how to have this part of their IEP process, so that all students have the opportunity to participate in learning loss. So, any of these families that we weren't able to contact, or parents were opted out, can still receive that support in this school year and next summer. So, we will, we will try to reach everyone. And with that, I will turn it over to Scott. Do you want to go back to the slide?
I might. I don't know. Hi, everybody. For the benefit of those who don't know me, my name is Scott Sodi. I'm the chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. I am, it is a parent-led group. So, I am a parent of a child with special needs, specifically visually impairment. And we have about 24 members, too, currently, hoping, always hoping for more. We meet on, at least a monthly basis, to with the, at our general meetings, work with the, sorry, work with the district office and personnel, and advise the board members about what's going on in special education. Starting with the assessments, we certainly applaud the work the district has done to address this issue. However, there, I just wanted to remind the board that the promise was to have the overdue assessments complete by the fall. And while the numbers have reduced, there still continues to be assessments overdue. The result of this delay is, is, the result of this is a delay in services to those kids who would qualify at a very critical time in their development. I remind everyone that we're talking about three-year-olds, right? So, any delay in So to take a selfish example for myself, is my daughter's in the Visual Impairment Department. There are a total, or there should be a total of 12 teachers for the visually impaired in the district. There are currently five vacancies. Five. There's never been less than two or three vacancies. So it's always been hard, this is a hard position to fill. And this is just an example. Obviously, all of these positions can be very difficult to fill. They require extra training and education on top of what is already required to be a teacher. Add to that, if the department is already reduced in staff, it just burdens the people that remain in increasing their own caseload. The board had approved last year a $10,000 bonus for teachers in special education, which was an important and positive step. More needs to be done, though, to recruit and even more importantly, retain teachers, especially in special education. To the summer academic program, don't have a slide. Sorry. I'll give this back then. We'd like to thank, we'd like to thank Ed Basely in particular and his team for working very hard to integrate the Extended School Year Program with the General Education Summer Program. The Extended School Year is required by law and has been running independently for years. It took a real effort to integrate that program with the General Ed Program and found much more success this year. The After-School Enrichment Program, more work needs to be done to make that accessible to students with disabilities. I've spoken with Dr. Jackson about this already. With outside vendors providing the programs, it's not clear what experience or staff will be available to assist students with disabilities. If there's no clear guidance or communication, then parents and families will be very hesitant to sign up because they don't feel welcome in the first place. Turn it back over.
Thank you, Scott. Hello. Good evening. In this section, I will highlight some of the academic progress, as well as areas that we continue to work on and continue to get right. And as a district, we're committed to supporting our students and ensuring that they receive a meaningful diploma, to live a choice-filled life once they leave our system. Specifically for our students who receive special education services, our goal is to increase their cohort graduation rate from 68.7% to 87% by the year 2025. And I will provide more context regarding these rates in the next couple of slides. In this slide, you could see the cohort graduation rate has increased over time since 2019, from 56% to its current preliminary rate of 68.7%. This data of students receiving special education services is highlighted in the green box. When we think about some of our actions and we reflect upon what we've done over the years, first and foremost, credit goes to the IEP teams, to the staff, teachers, service providers, our families, our partners, and most importantly, our students and their hard work. Additionally, in 2019, we developed a call to action district-wide where we were really intentional and focused on increased ownership, access to the core, and high-quality instruction for all of our students. Additionally, Assembly Bill 104 provided our students the opportunity to earn a diploma by earning the state minimum requirements. Our students receiving special education services were the first to return to in-person learning. We also offered targeted summer support, as Sarah described, at the Learning Loss Action Plans. These actions not only contributed to our increased cohort graduation rate over the past couple of years, but it also is evident in the Smarter Balance Assessment by the academic performance of our students. As Dr. Bogula mentioned, that the Smarter Balance Assessment results are just a snapshot during unprecedented times. On the, on the left side, I think the left side, is the math performance data. And on the right side is the English performance data. And the students receiving special education services are highlighted in the green box. As you can see in the math performance, it has been relatively unchanged with a slight increase. I'm going to give us credit from 15.3% to 15.5%. What you see in the reading and the literacy, there has been steady increase over time from 2019 to 2022. So it really shows the hard work by IEP teams, our staff, our families, and most importantly, our students. So here is the outcome data that I wanted to go back to in the opening part of this section regarding our goals. I want to provide you the context of our current data, as well as our goal to reach. As I mentioned earlier, 68.7% of our students receiving special education services receive the high school diploma within the four years. We have 11.6% of our students earning a certificate of completion, which represents about 100 students, a little over 100 students, whose course of study is aligned to meeting their IEP goals. We have a small subset of students who pursued an alternative pathway through enrolling in adult education or enrolling directly in community college. And our students to reach is where we need to get right. It's the students that represent that gold section where we need to do better, that we have the responsibility and obligation to ensure that they receive a meaningful diploma. These students, 10.7%, are still enrolled. They're either in a fifth-year program or enrolled in trace, or they have not yet completed school. So we also refer to them as students who have dropped out. And that represents 8.5% of our students receiving services compared to the general education of 3.8%. So yes, we have a ways to go. And there's a number of students counting on us to get it right and to provide them with the necessary support and supporting their IEP goals and ensuring that they receive a meaningful diploma. So as a team, initially when we were here in April, we shared with you that we continue to have ongoing collaboration for alternative pathways, and we want to explore options such as joint diploma and meeting the state minimum requirements. So we have a team right now, a work group of district staff coming together to gather data, to solicit feedback from students, former students, staff members and families, and come together and take a look at different options and be able to provide you with an update when we come back in April. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sodi.
Yes. So yeah, the graduation rate increases are certainly positive. However, a portion of that increase was due to the expansion of the state minimum diploma under AB 104, and that AB 104 has sunsetted now. So that is no longer available. So it is up to the board here to approve of an expansion of alternative pathways such as the state minimum diploma to continue those increases that we are seeing. We've been advocating for a long time about having alternative pathways besides just the A through G, as well as the certificate of completion. So we're glad to hear that the work is being done behind the scenes. We're certainly, would love to see it presented to us at some point, and hopefully we'll have an update when we come back in April for. I think that's it for now. Sorry. Yeah. I was, where am I? Okay. We didn't practice together, so that's the problem.
So next, I want to talk about the state's criteria around disproportionality and how the risk ratio that's identified here is indicating that we, as a district, are three times more likely to suspend our African-American students receiving special education service than any other ethnic group. And because that has occurred in our district for three years in a row, we now are deemed by the state significantly disproportionality, or insignificant disproportionality. And we really take that seriously. We've seen, we were hopeful after the 1920 for the data that came out in 2021, only to see it increase, right? And so that ratio even went higher with the five. And so when we really look at the data, remember that it's a bit old. So when you look at the, when the reporting period is, you know, you look at the 2021, the reporting period was March of 2019 to April of 2020, really March of 2020 when we left for COVID. And so, you know, we'll be seeing new data as it comes out. And so we, this is an area, and I would say an area of concern for all students, but the reason we got into disproportionality was students who are African-American who were suspended 10 or more days, as indicated in the data. So what that means is we start working on a comprehensive, coordinated, early intervening services plan alongside the state technical advisory team. And so what that starts with is really that root cause analysis and data discovery, which is where we're at now. So what we've been doing is collecting qualitative data. We've been working through local education initiatives and inventory to see what is our current practices, what are we doing? We've done focus groups with all of these different partners. We've done parent focus groups. We've met with CAC has been invited to those. We have offered general parent that anyone can come. We recently reached out to Tasha Williamson for inviting our African-American families to be part of this focus group. And we're wanting them to be small, so there's about 15 members per group, but we can have as many groups as we want to really get understanding and understand the root cause behind this. We also have pulled student files, over 75 student files, to really see what's going on with students, look at their data specifically for students, not only the students that were part of this data poll, but all other students within our school. We also conducted empathy interviews, and this was actually done with the technically advisory team, so an outside organization, coming in and doing interviews to try to get a real perspective of what's going on. They're right now writing the report and giving us that data. So we haven't seen that data yet. We're excited to get our hands on it and be able to really dissect it. So we're really just kind of finishing up this stage. It is something that will continue. Once we have this, that then moves us into that plan development. And this is being developed across our whole district. So it is a partnership with the board, the superintendent, the instructional cabinet team, not just special ed in isolation, which is great, because we want this to be a plan that's developed across schools for all students. So we're in that data discovering root cause to then have a systematic plan development and activities to help not only our students that are targeted in the plan, African-American students receiving, but all students that may have disproportionality with discipline. In addition, we're also still continuing to work on our moderate-to-severe guaranteed viable curriculum. This is really to better support our students. We are one of the only districts working on this. And it really is to help inclusion and support and alignment across our schools for our students in the mod severe program. So we have finished Unit 1 for all of them, as you can see, and we have now had that started. So every teacher has been invited and shared to start Unit 1. They have been coming to training. We have model classrooms that are being supported. We're going out and seeing it in action, and we're sitting side-by-side teachers to see how this is going and get feedback. We are working on writing Units 2 and 3, so they will be ready when the teachers are ready for them, and hope to have all of that done in time. We really struggled with this project. And the reason that we've struggled is because in order to write this curriculum, we need teachers to do it. We need teachers that are actually mod severe teachers in the classroom working with students. And we need partnership with our English language, you know, benchmark team, so we understand the curriculum to modify. And we've really struggled to pull teachers out of the classroom to do this work. So over the past two years, we've really prioritized them to be in the classroom, and that's, this work has been done outside of classroom hours, on the weekends, in the summer, when people are ready. Really, last year, we're struggling. And so we were not able to be where we want to be in this project, where we promised we would be in this project, because we thought we would have people being able to do this full-time, and we just can't. And so with that, we are now starting to see more availability of people. We're starting to have visiting teachers, so the teachers can be released, and we're starting to get more momentum with the project. We also have some outside agencies that have joined us, so we are seeing some momentum, but it still is not as fast as we would like. We are taking those learnings as we move to math. So we started to do math, and we stopped because we are not sure we're continuing with the math we have or when we're adopting a new math, and we don't want to modify to then get a new one. So when we start to think about our math, we want to make sure we're asking for modifications alongside and that we're able to roll out in a unified way and not somebody gets something and somebody else gets something three years later. So although it's late, it's really good, and the teachers have shared how great they love it. It's a great support. They really like that it's ready to use. It makes their job a lot easier. It's less workload on them because it's prepared and ready to go. Their students are feeling a part of the community. They're more engaged when they're in general ed because it's the same exact curriculum that's being taught alongside, and a lot of our students are able to be inside general ed and inclusion classrooms more often. It really also is modified to different levels. So this is a student that's in our home hospital program, who is homebound and is unable to go to school and can access the curriculum through his switches and different curricular materials that have been really beneficial. So it's being able to adapt this and, for all levels, and being able to have that experience.
I'll continue with the mod severe curriculum. The stated goal and promise of the district was to have the math and English Language Arts mod severe curriculum completed by January 2022, last January. So as you can see, not done with the English language yet. That is hopes that it will be complete. We're sort of building, I guess, building the track as we go throughout the school year. And then the math is, I understand it's, you know, we don't want to change something or modify something only to have it, you know, a new math curriculum be adopted and then get to start all over again. I understand the reasoning, but, you know, we still have students in the district that this does nothing to serve them and they are currently in the district. I'm not sure how we expect the graduation rate to improve by 2025 if the curriculum is not yet developed for them to actually partake in it. Going back to the discipline, I want to tie the discipline piece to the rest of the topics we're discussing tonight. Disproportionality in discipline is a symptom of failures in the rest of the system. If kids are not timely assessed, they don't get access to services, if there's a lack of staff and a lack of training, then the students cannot receive the benefit of the education they were to be provided. There's not an appropriate curriculum, activities, and materials available. It is natural for a student to try and escape demands, access noneducational activities, seek attention, and so on. Dr. Ott stated that this was triggered due to significant disproportionality for African-American students receiving special education, but the issue should not be narrowed to only look at that particular group of students. All students with disabilities are disciplined at higher rates than their peers. We need every single student, all races, no matter their support needs, to have a pathway to a meaningful educational experience in which they can graduate from San Diego Unified, prepared for post-secondary education and training, and competitive integrated employment. I just wanted to, sorry to end on that note, to much, on a positive note, our meeting in December, Dr. Jackson will be joining us December 8th for informal sort of thing. So we look forward to that. Thank you very much, if you have any questions.
We have no speakers, and so now, this is an informational item, but I'd like to hear from board members and I'll hold my remarks until then.
Thank you, President White. Here's Payne. Just a couple of comments. First of all, this was the clearest presentation that I've ever experienced coming from the CAC and the staff to the board, because you were talking about the same topics. And I just really, I know how much work went into making that happen, and it certainly makes our job a lot easier when we're hearing from both of you on the same topics. I also very much appreciate- I also very much appreciate the honesty and the transparency about where we're doing well, but also where we're not. And I know that that's a hallmark of Dr. Jackson's leadership, as it was with Cindy Martin before, to be very honest and clear about the work in front of us. So thank you for that. It seems that, you know, there are obviously a number of issues, but at the core is staffing and the challenge of being able to staff up in order to do our assessments, in order to complete the curriculum, and in order to obviously, you know, meet the needs of our students day to day. I know that we've done a lot of really important work, particularly with SDA at the bargaining table, to create what I would imagine in, for special education educators, is a pretty attractive place to work, both in terms of our salaries, benefits, support, and, you know, student to teacher ratios. So given that we've done a lot of hard work to create, I think positions that, you know, we would imagine would be attractive to people to come and work in our district, what kind of outreach are we doing to make sure everybody knows about what's, and I know this is a HR question as well, what San Diego Unified offers and to fill those positions? And I know, I know that staffing, particularly on special education, is a challenge, you know, for all school districts. I understand that, but given that San Diego Unified should be a place that people want to come and work, I guess my question is what more can we be doing to aggressively get out there and bring special educators into our district?
I didn't know if that was a question. And I know, in case you can answer too. What I, what I think we really need to think about is, in areas that are very hard to staff, in the example that Scott used around VI, you know, there's not institutions in San Diego, so they're not even living here. There's two in all of California. And so, you know, how do we partner with our universities to offer more programs? And then, you know, when I went to San Diego State, there were five students in the mod severe program. So we get all of them. There's just not enough, right? And so how do we encourage high schoolers to go into the field of special education as a career and want to really work with, with very diverse learners who have so many gifts? And the people who are in that, when you talk about why are you in, it really came from their high school or a camp or some type of experience. So how do we do outreach that way? Because we do a lot of outreach with our universities. We need to get the students in the universities, and we need the universities in our city to have the programs that we need.
To follow up on that question, then, what kind of lobbying or whatever are you doing with the universities? You know, at one point, we had to create our own programs in order to have what we needed with the universities, or even independent. BECA and UTIP intern programs and some others, we had to go, because I think the numbers, was it 121 that we have vacancies right now?
That's in, I have a page too.
Right, but I think that's 121. Yes, but we have quite a few vacancies right now. And I don't know, you look at assessments, those are labor intensive, I mean, those meetings and all the things that you have to do to assess a child. So you can't just have one person doing 1,000 or 500 or whatever. You have to have the folks there to do the job. And, you know, I was recruited nationally, and I've been all over the country. All the districts are struggling. We can't go to Philadelphia or wherever to steal their folks. We've got to do our own here. We must do our own, every district, that's the only way we're going to do it, because you said something important. We have children who need these services. And I'm a little, not a little, a whole lot disturbed about the African American piece. And we talked about that when the state came in to present this data, these data earlier. But I'm sorry, I ignored my colleagues. You guys want to talk first? I'm just talking away, but I just, just before Sabrina comes, what does, what does your committee look like? What is, what are the concerns of your committee in terms of, do you have a subset dealing with the fact that we've got a population that's obviously, when you get data that surfaced three years in a row like that, that says to me, a red flag, something is up here, I need to isolate and do something, get some research on what's going on? In that sense, I'm glad the state flagged it for us, because you had a feeling that something was going on, but for them to actually have hard data showing that, that says there's a problem here. And so I've shared that with trustee and the team that's working on it. I want to see results, and I know we all do, but we make excuses, but at some point we have to deliver. That's it, I'm sorry. Trustee.
Thank you, President and Dr. Whitehurst-Pain. I also wanted to echo what trustee Barrera said about your hard work and working together on this, this presentation in particular, because how you, how you all work together, it made a lot of sense, and it seemed to move through the information smoothly, so I appreciate that. And as I'm learning more about special ed programs, all the complexities and all the challenges and, you know, the, all the, you know, you know, the challenges that you're facing, and you're doing an amazing job. I just had a question, with the three-year-old assessments, what's being done, like, to filter, so are we, along with the significant disproportionality question, are we looking at, is there a way to look at the students that are needing that the most, so that we're reaching them first? I mean, I know we're behind in doing the assessments, but is there some kind of order so that maybe the students that are seen, however that's being assessed are most in need are being assessed maybe more quickly than some of the other ones that might be more moderate?
So we do look at the age of the student. We want the ones closest to three assessed in priority, because they're getting family services until they're three. So we want to make sure, you know, as soon as they're three, we're able to service them as soon as possible. So that's how we prioritize. We also have an intake team that looks at the student needs and has a peer group that really sends students to comprehensive or to speech only, so that we're able to move through the process a little bit faster, and that's new this year. So we are seeing that as a success, as onboarding of families, being able to process and prioritize that a little bit differently. It's not necessarily based on need, but more based on age as we go through and the process that needs to take, because a comprehensive assessment may take longer than if somebody who may just have more of a mild speech need, but we want to make sure we're looking at both.
Yeah, I guess just with that much of a deficit of assessments that you're in, it would seem to make sense to try to get to those students as much as you can that are having the most difficulties or would benefit the most versus maybe those that, you know, are having some difficulties but are, would still be able to get along. I mean, just because we're, you know, we have such a number to get through.
And the nice thing is if they do enroll in one of our programs, so if they are three and they enroll in our three-year-old program, we assess them there. So they're still getting support and services. We also offer learning loss for anyone that we missed the assessment timeline. So through that learning loss action plan, that's also offered for any three-year-olds. So if they missed a month of service and they were eligible for special ed, but we weren't able to assess them in time, we offer additional tutoring to make that up.
And I have an anecdotal example. I know for a fact that you guys are doing that. A recommendation went forth for a child who was two, just turning three, and you did, you handle it, and you got him in. So I know that, and the family's thankful. Everybody else around is thankful that you're helping out, just kind of working with him to bring him to that point where he can survive. But I still say that, you know, it's just troubling that we haven't addressed that group. If I had seen someone else other than African Americans for three years, if there had been one year maybe a Latinx group or some other group, then that would say to me, huh, but it's just constantly focused on that one group, that we just have to do something about it.
Yeah, I think we are certainly aware of this, and as you know, we'll be presenting to the board a comprehensive approach to meeting the needs of our African American students. This has been historical, and we want to bring our outside partners along with us, because we cannot do this alone. And I think that goes to what Scott mentioned. You know, we have to think about a comprehensive approach to assessment. It can't just fall on one department, and so how do we build that up? Whether we look at a cluster model, a central office model to provide assessments, because that is where we know it begins. And when we're able to do that early, we can provide the needs, we can provide the needs, then we can prevent some of the results that we're seeing. And so this is a two-pronged, a three-pronged approach to meeting the needs of our African American students. And as we say, when we, when we can meet the needs of our most marginalized students, we can meet the needs of all. We can say that with confidence, we are about all, but until we do that, we can't say that we're about all students. And so I'm appreciative of our equity and belonging team, I'm appreciative of the small group that's doing the work here, and Scott is right. It's good, but it's not good enough. And we have some work to do, and I'm saying to all of us right now, we are deeply committed to this work, and we will see the results. Thank you.
We all heard that, didn't we? Thank you for that. Thank you. Anybody else with any questions? Not thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for pointing out the challenges and the concerns, and the one that is very concerning is the disproportionality of data, and it looks like we're, we've identified it, and we'll make effort to correct that. I also want to point out the highlights. So it looks like we are closing the achievement gap when we compare the 2019 to the 2022, as our, the gap between the outcomes in reading and math have increased significantly, you know, going from a difference of 36 points to a difference of 28. So we're moving in the right direction in closing the achievement gap. Also on slide nine, it indicates that our students, as they went into COVID and with the virtual learning, they stayed flat or increased, as opposed to our regular students who decreased. And I'm wondering, what was the difference? What did we do in special ed that we didn't do in regular ed that allowed our students with special needs to increase their gains, whereas our regular students dropped?
I don't know that we could answer that right now. I think, you know, there are a few things that we identify, you know, we had a very clear call to action. You know, our students did return, our students with disabilities returned sooner. I think with our learning loss and our support for students during the summer, I think those are some things that we can lean on and say, we did well by our students. Again, I think it's going to Scott's point again, lifting up the fact that we, we still need to make sure that our students have access to the curriculum that they need, and we need to be more mindful of that. And also the supports for our students in classrooms and being able to support them. And so I think it's very clear, the work that we were doing pre-pandemic was really a driving force to support the results that we're currently seeing. But we have work to do, and we're not going to shy away from that, but we're going to be very clear on the work that we've done in terms of our literacy focus and our support for our neediest learners.
Thank you. Yes. Katornia.
Thank you. I just want to say a few things. First of all, thank you for all the great work that you've done. These numbers really are great, but something really irked me and kind of raised a little bit of a red flag when talking about these early childhood special education. We see these numbers, and we see that 600 assessments are yet to be completed while 200 are being completed. And you spoke a little bit about how there's a labor shortage of five spots. To me, this huge, this huge gap speaks more than just five spots missing. So what, beyond the labor, what else is missing? Because I know that's something that we've definitely emphasized here up on the dais, but what more beyond that?
So let me just clarify. Our obligation is to assess by this time the student turns three, but parents can request assessment when a student's like 2.5. So all of those 603, we're not, we wouldn't assess, we're not required to assess or we don't need to assess until they turn three. So I'm just giving you, like, all the parents that are requesting. Only the 123 are actually over timeline. And so that is the staffing. So we did add this year, three additional teams. So we have six assessment teams whose only job is early learning assessments, and we added three additional teams. So we expected them to do 10 to 12 a month per assessment team. So that is what's new, plus the weekend assessments. The additional staff of the three teachers is there are certain assessment teams that only have a halftime teacher, and we want to make them full, so that they can do more assessments. And so we do think with the nine assessment teams and the, and the weekend assessments that just started this year, we will be able to catch up. But it all depends on how many assessments requests we get. So, you know, we may get way more than we're expecting, and we'll continue to be in this pattern, and so we'll have to look, can we add more assessment teams? Can we have more students go to school at three so that they can be assessed at their school? Like, you know, different ideas that we can have if we end up getting more. But we're, compared to the other years, we're doubling in the request for assessment, and I'm hopeful that that's not a trend that continues, that that really is due to the
I wanted to build off of your question. For the assessments, is it the parents that request them, or are the students coming in and someone in early childhood is saying, oh, because, well, maybe some parents are more worried, the worried well, or so, I mean, just, you know, that's why I was asking if there was any way to filter, you know, the, how you're doing the assessments, because, you know, if they're reading okay, I mean, do you have to assess everyone? Is there, is there any kind of, kind of factors that you look at that you, in terms of assessments, or do you just have to assess anyone that you're requested to assess?
So it's a really good question. You know, in our UTK through 12 model, we do response to intervention, multi-tiered intervention, we do all these things. The federal law for three-year-olds is that if they have a family plan, oftentimes that comes from regional centers, so 50% of these or more have a family plan, meaning that their doctor diagnoses them with a developmental delay, and they come to us, we are required by federal law to assess them. They may not qualify for service, about 10% don't, but we are required to assess them. The other 50% are coming from doctors or families that are saying they've had indicated delays. Sometimes we meet them in our intake, and we say, you know, we're going to write a notice, letting them know that we, we think that things are okay, and we're going to move them. But most often, we assess, because we, we don't have enough data without assessment to say what you've known for three years of your life is not true. So we do assess. So it is harder to have intervention in our early program because of the way that the regulations work. And so we do often assess almost every request.
Thank you, Scott, for chairing a very challenging committee, and thank you for the staff and the committee for coming together. This is the first time we've ever had a joint presentation, and I concur with my fellow trustees, especially trustee Richard Barrera, when he said that this is the clearest presentation that I've seen in my 12 years on the board. But I really also echo my fellow board members when I say thank you for the transparency of highlighting where we are doing well, and just talking about and being honest with our opportunities to improve, so that we can figure out plans, address those, and improve in those areas. Thank you very much for that. A couple of things. First of all, I really want to thank Akisha Thied and her team in HR for all their work to try to hire more staff to take care of our children. She had, you know, job fairs on the lawns, she's did all this other stuff, she pushed for the $10,000 hiring bonus for special education teachers in San Diego Unified. And I'm looking forward to the report on how, how did, what, how many special education teachers were we able to hire as a result of that $10,000 hiring bonus? were we able to hire as a result of that $10,000 hiring bonus? The other side of the coin is also attrition. You know, you know, do most, do most special education teachers leave in their first two to three years? Because they're not getting the support, they're overworked. I mean, why do we have this, this need? And that's, I think, a part of the whole conversation that we've had before. And I look forward to, you know, seeing some data on that. One of the things that I think is really important is that a lot of the analysis that we do is based upon a false assessment. The federally mandated standardized testing is flawed for many, many reasons. First of all, before I talk about why these federally mandated Common Core standardized tests are wrong and we should not be using them at all, is that, first of all, in the state of California, parents have a right to opt their children out of this crazy testing system. Follow the money. The testing system has been mandated by legislators in Sacramento and Washington DC who are paid, who are lobbied by these corporations that make billions of dollars in profit off of our kids. They take money out of the classroom to pay for federally mandated standardized testing. And this goes all the way back to No Child Left Behind, which left children behind. When the CST testing system, when educators started helping children meet those standards and schools, even in high poverty areas, were realizing amazing educational growth, the structure and the powers that be threw away the CST system and replaced it with the Common Core system. Because obviously, public education was doing right by our kids when we measured with the CST test. So they threw that system out and now they changed the goal line. It's well documented that these standardized tests are gotcha questions intended to trick kids into getting them wrong. So the billion-dollar testing industry can then set, that can then sell us, you know, support books and intervention books and things like that. Additionally, we know that these standardized tests are biased. And who are they most biased against? African American students. So African American students across the country will traditionally always not perform because these tests are biased. There's intrinsic bias in these questions. And we, most educators already know this. Additionally, these federally mandated Common Core standardized tests take away instructional time. In math, I lose two weeks of instruction just so my kids can take test after test after test. Two weeks of instructional time gone every year that we have to test our kids. And some schools test for two, three, four, five, six weeks every year. So I really, really hope that we can take a look at the 10,000-foot view, get out of the weeds, get out of the forest and take a step back and really try to understand, we are stuck in a maze and we can't figure out, how do we help these kids? And what's going on with those kids? And the real reason is because the metric that we're using is flawed. And that's really, really important. Until we have that conversation, I think we're going to continue to find ourselves in this position. But most importantly, as a math teacher, I'm really disappointed that the Common Core standardized test does not measure growth at all. It doesn't measure how much did the student learn that year? Only can they pass this standard. It doesn't, it doesn't measure if a student comes to a teacher at an eighth grade at a second grade math level and by the time they leave, they might be at a fifth or a sixth grade math level. That student could have grown four or five years of math learning in one year, but they are considered and labeled a failure because they didn't test at the eighth grade math level at the end of the year. So once again, parents in the state of California have a legal right to opt their children out of this federally mandated standardized testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on this? I too want to thank you all for your presentation. And I know I've marked it up and sent it back to you and on and on and on, but it helps. And you know about my frustrations over this, not at you, but over the fact that we have to get it right. And I commend you also for the fact that during the pandemic, our scores for special ed students did not go down. They, you kept it moving and that's amazing that everybody else was going down. But whatever we did to help those special ed students during that time, we need to keep it up and do it, accelerate that and then go and do some of the things we were doing before to help the other students so that everybody's rising. Okay?
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, and with that, I'd like a motion on items G2 through G...
Five. So moved.
Thank you. A second on that?
Can't second it? I'm sorry.
Yes, this is only, this is non-student board members here. Second, okay, Barrera. Okay, any discussion? I see any speakers. So no discussion, we'll vote. Please vote electronically. Okay, that passes. Those items, those action items passed unanimously.
I'll move item H1, the $500 million in bond sales.
Okay, thank you. A second on that? Thank you. And this is an item the students may participate in. So anyone, no speakers again on that. And I don't think anyone else has any questions on that. So let's move forward. Nepo Museno?
Aye.
Thank you. And Kitorianu?
Aye.
Thank you. And everybody else is voting electronically. That passes unanimously with the students concurring. That moves us to item H2, which is the presentation of personnel update. Thank you, Mrs. Akisha Thida.
Hi. Good evening. So we had a little bit of a preview, heard some exciting things. So today I am appreciative of the opportunity to present to you, Dr. Jackson and members of our board. Tonight I'm going to present the annual update on our personnel. The purpose of this report is to provide the board and our community with an update on the actions taken to ensure staff are in place for the start of the school year. This year's updates include a discussion of our efforts to increase the diversity of our educators as well as recruitment and retention efforts, kind of talked about that in the last item, as well as all of our efforts identified in goal four of the LCAP. I just want to kind of preface this with a high-level summary of what you're going to hear. So over the last year, there's been a lot of discussion about the impacts of the teacher shortage and what we're worried about is how it impacts students. What I'm happy to report and what I'm really proud of is that as a district, we have worked diligently to stay ahead of the teacher shortage. And we've been able to do so in a successful manner, which I'm going to highlight today. Those, some of those ways that you've heard me talk about before are strategies that still continue to work for San Diego Unified because as a community, we have a commitment. And that is to partner with our innovator teacher education programs locally and nationally. And we also continue to be very competitive with early hiring, hiring incentives and just being in community and connection with people who want to become educators. The district has had a long history of creating pipelines and pathways for educators. This has been extremely important as we have known that credential programs each year enroll less and less folks. And we continue to have our focus on a commitment to diversifying the education profession. So despite the impact of COVID on the education profession and the nationwide concerns about teacher shortage, today you'll see that we are still very competitive and we're doing well. So I talked a little bit about our commitments to diversity. And so as a department, my division, we have our mission statement here, that our focus is on ensuring the success of all students by supporting and empowering a diverse workforce. So I want to start by giving you a highlight of the diversity of our new hires. So from July 1st to October 1st, 2022, the percentages of grouped, of educators, classified staff and leaders are there. And those, that's just a snapshot in time. That is a self-identification of individuals who have identified themselves in diverse categories. We know, and as we've heard from both of our student board members as well as our other student groups that we've bought before the board, we know that representation matters in our classrooms and in our schools. And so we continue to have that commitment as part of our local control and accountability plan and the work that we do to attract and retain folks. This slide demonstrates our continued commitment. And if our numbers keep continuing like this, we're going to continue above the state and the county averages. The next slide gives you an overview and an illustration of what it takes to actually staff and prepare for the start of the school year. It would be wonderful and amazing if this were a one-time thing, but it's not. Because of the size of our district, one of the largest employers in the county, we have a year-round recruitment strategy for recruitment, selection and hiring. This slide provides you with an overview of the steps that we take to fill vacant positions in preparation for the start of the school year. We know that in reality, as much as we would love to say we are 100% staffed, there's just a lot. When you have 14,000 employees, there's always going to be someone who's in transition. And so what you see here though is really great news. We had in our last recruitment period, November 1st, 2021 to October of 2022, we received 23,770 applicants in 687 recruitments. Within those 687 recruitments, there were 454 classified recruitments, 139 certificated recruitments and 94 management recruitments. And some other slides, you're going to say, 139 certificated recruitments? We hired way more people than that, which is true. But we hire in pools. So we create eligibility pools that allow us to interview and select and hire from the same recruitment over time. And so that pool allows us to have flexibility in constantly recruiting. So although there are only 139 recruitments, that it does not equate to the number of educators that we hired. Same with management. Yes. So a recruitment is essentially a job posting. So we posted 687 postings. And from that, so on the classified side, those were usually individual postings or sometimes we hired more than one. So for example, on the classified side, we have a continuous posting for paraeducators. That is posted all the time and we hire hundreds of people from that particular posting. Same thing for bus drivers. We hire all of our bus drivers from the same posting. And all that allows us to do is expeditiously screen and qualify candidates to get them in front of the hiring manager sooner. We have individualized recruitments for a highly specialized position. The superintendent of public instruction was a very public recruitment that we had. Our principal positions are one-to-one recruitments. So that's why you see the difference in numbers of applicants versus numbers of recruitments. It's just the manner in which we advertise our positions and then how we can use best practices in personnel recruitment to actually find candidates and get them in front of our hiring managers. Something that's really important and critical to us that has been, I think, a blessing for us as a system is because we have so many positions, we are able to offer employment to folks in places where we may have had to lay off in the past. And so because we have had enough vacancies and not as many reasons for, to conduct an actual financial layoff, we have been able to work with our bargaining units to reassign folks instead of having them leave our organization. And that just keeps our employees in a great space. It keeps knowledge within our communities and it really helps us as a system take care of our employees and their families. By comparison, just so you have some numbers. In the same time period, last year, November 1st, 2020 through October 1st, 2021, we had 19,508 applicants, 535 recruitments. 350 were for classified, 92 were for certificated and 93 were for management. So more recruiting this year than last year, more applicants from this year than last year. This time last year, I shared with you the impact of the job market conditions on our employees as they return to the workforce. And so I wanted to give you a highlight and kind of a summary of what we've done in the last year to overcome the job market conditions. So, and I wanted to highlight three really things, three things that we're really excited about and very proud of that happened this year that highlight our commitment and our strategies to not only recruit, but to retain staff. So the probably the most visible was our event on the lawn in June. We had more than 700 participants. We had great support from our community. By advertising that, we were able to hire 37 clerical substitutes, 48 paraeducators, nine landscapers and 11 substitute teachers. So that was a great success for us. And it's, sometimes it's, we even as, as our own team, we get excited like, why didn't we get 700? But that is a good number. Not everybody can start and not everybody can start at the same time. So we also, more than anything, build trust within our community. People who came were excited even if they didn't find something that day. They learned more about our district even if they didn't find something that day. And those who joined us had had a great experience as well. So we, and that was more than just the HR team. That was a whole district-wide effort of individuals coming together to put that on. So very proud of that work, very excited and appreciative of all of the teams who came together to make that happen. The next thing that I wanted to share is something that I've talked about before was, is our paraeducator hiring events. So Sarah and Mr. Sodi talked about the importance of having staff in front of students who are qualified and able to do that work in a high-quality manner. And so we, paraeducators in any organization often have turnover. In our organization, we kind of create our own turnover sometimes because we promote our paraeducators. Our paraeducators often come to us very skilled and already interested in education and we leverage those skills and knowledge to put them in our teacher pipelines. So, but also paraeducators are just valuable in our system. And so we have systematized an effort to ensure that we're always actively hiring for our paraeducators. So in addition to the summer event where you saw we hired 48, we also had two events so far this year. We actually had three because we just finished one yesterday. And those events will continue to hire throughout the year. And the reason why we do those is because when you have 178 schools who are hiring, it's, we take some of the logistical efforts that it takes to call all of our eligible candidates and schedule the interviews. We just create a space where everybody can come together. We invite the candidates and then the leaders can come in and do their interview process. So we just try to take the logistical hurdles that can sometimes happen when you're a busy manager running a school, out of their hands and get them right to the point of hiring. The last thing on this slide that I'd like to highlight is something we're so excited about, which is one of our areas of focus on retention. And that is the lead paraeducator independence facilitator pilot. That's a really long word. So our paraeducator independence facilitator are our paraeducators who provide direct support to students. We have lead positions and those positions are designed to provide side-by-side support to our paraeducators. And I have to tell you, we have some amazing people in these jobs. They're pictured up there on the slide. We've been able to provide hundreds of individuals' one-on-one support from these ladies in person or in Zoom. They are going to make a huge difference in how we welcome people into our organization, how we support them when they're there. And not only are they supporting the paraeducator in the classroom, but they're supporting the whole classroom environment by providing skills, knowledge and expertise for people to feel that they are making the contributions that they came into the role for. So more to come on that, but I wanted to highlight it today. Next is, we talked, we've heard some questions and we had a lot of excitement around our hiring incentives. So to date, I wanted to So to date, I wanted to give you an update on how we're doing with our hiring incentives. Over the last two years, we've had two different incentives. And this has been a really great way to highlight the importance of work in these credential areas. These credential areas take individuals who are truly committed to the work that they are in and they're highly competitive. Everybody wants highly skilled ed specialist. Everybody needs registered credentialed school nurses. And so as a system, we've made an investment and committed to not only providing high levels of support to retain these folks, but also an incentive to come into our organization versus others. So up here, what you see is a comparison. To date, we've had 360 certificated staff who've received one of two hiring incentives offered in the 2021 and 2022 school years. The first column is data from July 1, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. A full year of the individuals in the credential areas that we were able to offer the first stipend to. And the first stipend was $4,000. The second column, you'll see that the number is lower and you, and the second column represents just our progress to date. So the second column is the 2022 incentive. That's actually a $10,000 incentive. That incentive only shows you part year data. So right now where we're at with our incentives is 217 individuals qualified for the $4,000 stipend last year. We have a full year of data. This year so far, 143 employees have been able to receive the payments of the $10,000 incentive. We have around 65 vacancies. So by the end of the year, the numbers will be about the same, depending on kind of how things go this year. Over time, when you just kind of do rough math, we'll spend right around $3 million of an investment for these individuals. And I, and I believe that it's well worth it. I know the board does because you approved it already. And we're very appreciative and believe that this has been a success for us to recruit and, and help staff retain. Though the nice feature of these incentives is that they're paid out over two years. So they are an incentive to not only have people start, but also stay with us. And we'll continue to give the board updates on these incentives throughout the year. This is a slide you've seen before. Over the year, we try to provide kind of a summary of the changes that happen with our employees and just kind of the movement that happens in a large organization like ours. So what you see here is just a snapshot in time. So from July first to October first, 2022, we've had 449 hires, 223 promotions, 311 separations. And today, or as of actually October first, we were sitting at 653 vacancies. 90 of those were teacher vacancies. We also provide a breakdown of kind of where we're at with our vacancies. So we have vacancy means that a person isn't in the job right now and we're going to fill that position. But there's stages of how a position is vacant. And so that's what we try to highlight here is that we have 240 positions actively in recruitment. That means they're posted or they're being screened. We have 413 of those 653. There are actually interviews in progress or they're, they're getting ready to make a selection. So the number isn't stagnant. It moves and it, and it is, it changes and adjusts day to day. And then I want to go into what we're doing next to fill those. So the next slide really goes over a snapshot of now that I've shown you the numbers, what we've done and how we got here. This is what we're doing next. So what we're doing next is we are continuing the strategies that we know work. So I talked a little bit before about the fact that we have ongoing recruitment. And that, that demonstrates itself in many different ways. We have weekly interviews. I talked about the hiring events that we had. We had two events this week. We had educator hiring event on Monday and we had a paraeducator hiring event yesterday. Then we also have just our regular interviews that we conduct both at the HR department level and at site and departments for their vacancies. I mentioned the monthly hiring events. And then we have continuous postings and paid trainings for really our select positions. So I mentioned the paraeducator pilot. But we also have as a district, a very unique bus driver training program that not a lot of districts do, but we actually provide paid training to people who want to become bus drivers. So it's a, it's a unique and really incredible benefit that we have because not all districts do that. If you have to go drive a bus in other places, you have to pay for the training yourself. So we are very appreciative of that. And then what you see here is similar to the last slide. It's just a narrative numerical description of where positions are at in recruitment by different groups of employees, where they're at in terms of the interview and selection process, and it brings it back down to that 653. And in closing, I want to thank the human resources division staff for their commitment to recruiting high quality educators, classified staff and leaders for our schools and our departments. We're very proud to continue in our ability to attract staff despite job market conditions and keeping our focus on diverse and equitable hiring in the forefront. And I also have our beautiful banner and appreciation. We encourage everyone who works for San Diego Unified to talk about your amazing experience as an employee because we can be our own advertisement. We should be our own advertisement and we should tell folks how wonderful it is to work here, why they should come work here and really truly, in its deepest sense, working in a school district is a way to contribute and give back to your community. And so we have made that a focus of our recruitment this year. So everybody out there, please refer a friend, apply today. And we have immediate openings in several job classifications. So thank you. That's my formal report.
Thank you. Everybody's jumping in here. I, I want to really say thank you because we knew we were facing a real issue this year with all the hiring and so forth. And so it's commendable. The event on the lawn was so exciting to see 700 people. And they thought I was applying for a job and they want to give me space in the line. No, thank you. But it was just really exciting to do that. And I was just saying to him, oh, I wish we could do that again, even more often. But I think for me, it's the, the whole special education piece. Because as you know, you know this better than anybody else in this room, other than Dr. Jackson and those in, in HR. It's just very difficult to get special education teachers. And we think we may have solved a problem here and the whole incentive, two years in a position. But we still are winding up at the same place where we have vacancies. I mean, that, that is one that we really have to really go back to the drawing board and figure out what can we do to bring in more folks? And I got excited about your special group there that you were talking about. And he says, oh, we still have 200 paraeducated vacancies. We don't want to steal them from there. But we've got to get more people and it's to the community. Please, if you have some training in special, special education or special needs and you're interested, I'm begging you to come and help not only us, but throughout the, the nations. The nation at least gets some more folks who, who have a commitment to help children. And they're the neediest of our kids. Yes.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. And Acacia, first of all, I just want to thank you for your whole report, but really lift up the diversity of our new hires. I mean, that is, these are the best numbers I think we've ever seen in terms of new hires. And I know they reflect a long term, incredible effort on your part. To, you know, we've always said our goal is to have our education force mirror our student demographics. And we're getting really close. And when we talk about our leaders, 99%, it's really significant work. And I know it's a short timeframe, but you know, I think if we were to go back and look at past trends, we'd see, you know, how, just how strong these numbers are. So thank you. I think, and it's a question that I'm not, you know, expecting any answers right now, but we have, I believe, the most skilled visionary leader of our human resources department that we could possibly have in you, Acacia. We've got a superintendent who has incredible experience around HR, former HR director of this district. And as President Whitehurst Payne, you know, just mentioned, with everything that you're doing and with everything that you're bringing to this effort, we still see what a challenge this is, you know, with special ed and with, with some other areas. So I guess what maybe we can ask as a board is what are your moonshot ideas? What are your, you know, big, never been done before? Ideas that you might at some point soon bring to us as a board and say, if we did these things, that's where we think we could really, you know, move, move the needle in ways that we've never done before. And I know you've already done a lot of that, but are there some big areas that we could take on and, and try things that, you know, maybe we haven't seen other school districts do? We haven't seen this school district do? So I would just ask that, you know, given everything that we have in place and yet we're still facing big challenges, how do we jump ahead? You know, and what are the, the really big ideas that you could, that you could bring to us? That's what I think we would want to, want to hear.
I think the barriers are, you got to look at what this CTC is saying, teacher credentialing office. I mean, you've got some barriers there, but we need to think even beyond that to, because you have to ask yourself, is it better to not have a, a teacher than to have someone who's at least trying and working towards that? And CTC, California Teacher Credentialing Office says you have to have A, B, C, D, E, F, G. But if you have zero, is it better to have A, B, C, D working on E, F? You know, at least, because it's not working this way. There are some kids out there who need some help. And no matter what we, we're doing so far within the, the traditional framework, it's not working. I mean, the $10,000 bonus is going to wind up the same as the 4,000, which probably winds up the same as not having a bonus. It's just, there's something else out there. We've got to find a way that the state hasn't thought of, or somebody has not thought of. We've got to find a way to give these children the support that they need. And it's not you. I'm not blaming you. It's the whole system nationally. We've got to think about ways we can address the needs of these children. Yes.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne, for your sentiment. I think that I really have always loved your passion and, and your focus on the kids. Because that's why we're talking about hiring in our human resources department. And I, I totally am, have seen a complete transformation in 12 years. I remember the conversations we had here 12 years ago about why don't we have any, why don't we have the diversity in the staffing? And the conversation would always go back to, well, it depends on the size of the labor pool. What's the demographics of the people graduating from the credentialing programs? And so then we made very deliberate concerted efforts with your help and President Whitehurst Payne and a lot of other folks on the staff to reach out to the HBCs across the United States of America and bring teachers here to get ahead of the, the teacher shortage that we knew was coming because we could look at the demographics. You know, I remember when I first got on the board, in five years, almost half of the teachers were going to retire. And we tried to figure out, how do we keep, how do we, how do we incentivize new teachers to join San Diego Unified? A lot of programs, a lot of effort and a lot of initiative. And I think that you said it really well, that any organization with 14,000 employees will always have vacancies. It's just, it's because it's a living, breathing organization. And I think one of the things that we've never really measured is when, from the point where a vacancy exists to the timeline when that vacancy is filled, that would be an interesting metric. Because you know, if we can fill a vacancy in three, four, six, nine months, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm just ballparking it. That would help us better understand because every time you report, oh, we have 100 vacancies. And we're thinking, gosh, what are we doing to fill those? Well, those 100 vacancies are probably going to be filled in the next six months. And then 100 new vacancies will be created as people move or they're, they, whatever happens. And so that's really an interesting thing to also be aware of and think about. So on behalf of, you know, for you and everybody in the human resources department and your team, I really appreciate all your work that you're doing, especially to alleviate and take some of that pressure off of the managers and the principals so that they can focus on their job and they're not spending so much time hiring also. So or vetting or interviewing and all that kind of thing. One of the things that I was wondering is I just love the QR code. You just scan that and it takes you right to the website where you can apply, see all the different jobs that are, we're hiring for. And you can apply online just with this QR code. To what extent are we able to get this QR code out into the San Diego community? Like in local community newspapers, in online ads and things like that?
So we, we love our QR codes because they are that easy. We're like, oh, here, here, apply. And so we, we have been increasing our social media presence. Our communications team is amazing. We have leveraged the multiple voices of our schools and leaders in the community. So whatever ways that make sense in a school's community, we, you guys have actually probably seen these banners. They're out, they're out, outside on the lawn. We made yard signs, we hung up banners. So wherever we can get this in front of folks digitally, paper, newsletters. I love the weekly update that comes from our superintendent because there's always an advertisement. It's almost, it's the very last thing at the bottom of the page. So there's always a continuous visual representation to say, we're hiring. Come join our team. Come be a part of San Diego Unified. So we have learned over time, one of the good things that COVID taught us is that we have learned that visuals are important and creative. Nobody wants to just look at a bunch of text. And that they're easy to get out in front of folks. So the way that we can digitize information, bring it in front of people actually is very helpful.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Before we go on further, how many employees do we have? I said 12,000. Somebody said, no, it's 15,000.
It's about, it's about 14. So that includes our substitute pool. So the number vary, vary, is varied depending on if you count our salaried employees and whether or not you include the substitute positions and or not. So it's, I always say it's around 14,000 because that's high level really what we have.
Good. I won't be inaccurate in the future. Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for the presentation. And it's just amazing, looking at and talking to our superintendent about how large this organization is. I mean, we're one of the largest organizations that hires in a county of 3 million people. So that in itself is incredible. And the fact that we haven't had to conduct any layoffs, I mean, that's incredible. And something going out into the community, that's very, a very positive thing that we can share. And I also appreciate the breakdown with the hiring incentive, just so we can kind of see that and see, because I'll still be able to share that with community members because I know that has come up. I just had a question about, because we're in such a large community. I mean, again, coming from this council of great city schools, there's a lot of places where like the, that, their, their school district is the only one in town, like, you know, in Seattle or other, other parts of the country. But we have 42 different school districts just in San Diego County. So I'm just curious, I mean, we all know that San, San Diego Unified is a fantastic place to work, but that must sometimes be a challenge because there's so many school districts competing for staff. Are there things that, that, what are, a few, maybe one or two things that we're doing to make us stand out from some of the other school districts so they know to come to us?
I think the thing that's really important is when we're talking
I think the thing that's really important is when we're talking to candidates, they want to know what it's like to work here. And so when we can all say how amazing it is to work here and we can share our stories of success, we can share our stories of the joy that we can bring to the school or department that we work with, that's the difference. Our, who we are as employees and how we work and commune within our school communities, within the larger community, that makes a difference why people want to come here. That's what people ask us. What's it like? That's why we, you know, there's lots of different ways to recruit. You can send a list out with names and you can call people, but what brings people here is the experience. So Dr. Whitehurst Payne, you talked about our event on the lawn. We didn't hire everybody, but we got to talk to every person that came that day about how amazing it is to work here. We had an event yesterday and we also get to show off our community. So our event yesterday was at UCSD's Extensions Park and Market Building. And so we, because of our partnership with UCSD, we were able to go to a place in our community and show what it's like to be part of our community. So working in San Diego is different than working in other districts. It's different than working across the state because of our size and because of the massive geographic area that is our community and because of the variability within San Diego. We're not one community. We're multiple experiences, communities, ethnicities, identities. And so coming here, you can find a place that you love and that you can make a difference in. So that's what I think the difference is. And then we pay really well. Our benefits are amazing and it's just a really great place to work. So that's, as you can tell, I am a recruiter. But I also, many of you know, I'm from the Midwest. I recruited in the Midwest and the most that everybody asked me was, what is there to do there? And you can't compare. You can't compare with what there is to do here and then work here. So we're just overall a great organization to work for and with.
Thank you. I think I saw your hand.
First of all, Acacia, once again, I just want to echo all the board members in applauding you for your work, your recruitment efforts, as well as the entirety of human resources. So thank you very much. And something that really stood out to me, especially having firsthand experiences on my campus and various campuses throughout San Diego Unified, is the Teach Lead Initiative. Having students, our very own students, understand the value and meaningfulness of education and eventually pursuing education to become educators or be involved with the education system and seeing firsthand that student-to-teacher pipeline is incredibly meaningful and inspiring. So thank you so much for the work you continue to do.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, quickly echo all the other board members' thanks. I mean, when I read these numbers of the diversity of new hirees, that is really powerful to me. Knowing that our future educators will look like our student body and we are making real progress with seeing the diversity that we need in schools is really inspiring. So thank you.
Dr. Mike?
Yeah, are we including our students at the recruiting fair or so?
I actually could probably get a lot more done if I just had the kids come and do recruitment. So, you know, we, everybody who loves to talk about our work is more than welcome.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report also. Thank you. And that moves us now to item I, which is superintendent's consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We don't have any speakers, so there's no discussion. Let's have the student, Nepa Moncino.
Aye.
Kitoriano?
Aye.
And everybody else is voting.
Thirteen and fourteen, right? Thirteen and fourteen, what?
We have any? We'll exclude those two for you two.
Aye abstaining from items thirteen and fourteen.
Aye abstaining from items thirteen and fourteen.
Thank you. The rest of us, none of them voted.
In motion is for the whole.
Yes, the whole group. Thank you. So that passes unanimously with the students concurring except on thirteen and fourteen. And that takes us to the end. And we have one person in person. Is that Catherine DeBois? Is she here? And now we have Viviana Gonzalez. Not here. And we have six virtual speakers. Are they on?
Only three.
Only three.
What is the telephone number?
Okay. I'm going to call the names. Ming Zeng, Weili Yang, Audrey Yuan. Ming is on, okay. And let's just see who else is on. Zi Yuan? No. G Corales. Okay, thank you. And Clara?
Shana.
Okay, Shana is on. Okay, so each, you have three minutes and we'll start with, you said Ming, okay. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you so much. Dear esteemed board members and media attendees, today is my daughter Audrey Yuan's birthday. She attends Vista Grande Elementary in Terracanta in District B and Area 1. Our family has actively supported Vista Grande. I have won around $3,000 in grant money for the school in my work as the Director of Grant Writing for the Parent Teacher Organization. This money supports all Vista Grande students. Since 2022, Audrey has been singled out and targeted by the principal Nikki Mitchell with disparate treatment. I complained about this treatment in May 2022 to your district, including Mitchell herself. Since then, the retaliation discrimination has continued. Most recently, Audrey's teacher in third grade, Darcy Rhodes, has targeted Audrey with harsh reprimands, intense unwelcome scrutiny and physical aggression while she did not treat any other students in the same manner. I have spoken directly to Darcy Rhodes on October 5th. After that, things only worsened. On October 12th, during exchange at school, Darcy Rhodes placed her hand on Audrey's head, turned Audrey's head around with force while reprimanding Audrey in front of other students. We have followed the proper mechanism prescribed by your district and reported the child abuse to your school police department and local authorities. I have also reported multiple complaints to your quality assurance office and to your Title IX coordinator since then. I submitted a uniform discrimination complaint to Title IX coordinator Lynn A. Ryan on October 18th requesting a formal investigation. I followed up with Ryan on October 19th. She replied that an acknowledgement will be sent to me in a few days. It has been a week. I have received nothing. Since then, your employees, including principal Nikki Mitchell, have offered nothing to Audrey in the way of counseling, therapy, physical psychologists or any other supportive measures that would not involve punishing Audrey by removing her or excluding her from class. Meanwhile, Darcy Rhodes remains in the classroom while my child remains traumatized. There have been no words of comfort shared with Audrey by any employees, let alone an apology. We are a family who lives outside of Terracanta. We are first-generation immigrants, non-native English speakers, not of high socioeconomic status and not of the same race, ethnicity, national origin as the demographics of the established community in Terracanta. For our leaders here today, your district employees have subjected my child to trauma, discrimination, bullying behavior and have put not blind eye to our proactive reporting of discrimination and misconduct. Why has no one been held accountable for this toxic and unlawful behavior? We would like a meeting with District B Board Member Kevin Kaiser and Superintendent Dr. Lamont Jackson. There are other factors of prejudice, privilege and a pattern of toxicity and microaggressions we have observed at Vista Grande that have translated into a culture of oppression for BIPOC families, that's Black Indigenous People of Color families. The district values of diversity, equity and inclusion are not upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord, for this. To the superintendent for follow-up. That takes us to G. Corales.
You're also, you're also in the room.
Aye. Aye.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, this is G. Corales.
Yes, hi, good evening. My statement is very brief. I am here in support of student Audrey Yuan. I was made aware by the family their concerns of misconduct regarding faculty at Vista Grande. I hope that her and her family's concerns of misconduct at Vista Grande are properly investigated and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clara?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Board President Whitehurst Payne, board members and Superintendent Jackson. Anti-LGBTQIA+ bills and rhetoric are constantly in our national news and recently we're experiencing many local conflicts. LGBTQ issues are looming large over many families in the district during this trying election season. Thank you so much for continuing to show your support for all students in so many things you do, including flying the Progress Pride flag at the education building every day. I'm pleased to see that you recognize the importance of social and emotional wellness at school. For many LGBTQIA+ students, achieving social and emotional wellbeing is a huge hurdle due to a lack of support from family, society and school. Having safe space options such as gender-neutral restrooms and locker rooms in every school can help them tremendously. Please commit to getting safe spaces in every location as quickly as possible. Students in your schools need them right now. Just this week, I watched a teen dissolve into tears when they didn't have access to non-binary spaces and it broke my heart that they blamed themselves for being a burden when it is the adults who have let them down. Finally, I urge you to mandate trainings for principals regarding LGBTQ students and how to treat them equitably and show sensitivity to their unique and urgent needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes, the other three speakers did not come on. Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for your comments to the board and superintendent today. We do value your input and please note that we feel that it will help us to make the district better. This concludes the Agendised Business of the Board. Our next meeting will be on November 15th. So with that, that's it.
I just, I would like the opportunity, President Whitehurst Payne, to briefly just let the public know that due to Brown Act laws in the state of California, I'm not able to comment on any person that spoke during non-agenda public comment, but we are, the president, Whitehurst Payne, did refer the comments of Meng Jang to the superintendent, Dr. Lamont Jackson for follow-up. Thank you.